Hello. Good evening and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Wednesday, October 25th. We are beginning at 6:47. And at this time, I'd like to confirm the agenda. Are there any items, any emergent items from any of the councillors as we move into these funding requests? Seeing none, I need a motion to confirm that agenda as presented. Councillor Mitzner?
I move that council adopt the October 25th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda as presented.
Thank you. You've all heard the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. We move now to item 3.1, Community Group Funding Requests. And I believe Leanna from our Finance Department is going to do a preamble, a bit of an introduction as we move into each of the groups. Just before we have that, again, I jumped the gun a little bit, but welcome. We know that you're all coming from very valuable groups in our community and we look forward to hearing your presentations, learning more about your organizations, getting caught up on things. I think you've all had the time situation explained to you and we'll move forward. Leanna?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, your worshiping council. We are starting our 2024 budget discussions with our community delegation night. In 2022, the town changed its process and started holding a community delegation night where community groups were given the opportunity to make funding requests prior to budget deliberations. Community organizations provide recreation, culture, education, and other benefits to Strathmore's residents and for people across our region. The town of Strathmore supports the work of these organizations to grant some funding. In 2023, over $800,000 in funds were provided to more than 20 community groups. So this year in our funding request process, all community group or all community organizations were invited to request funding as part of the 2024 process. This is their opportunity to be included in the conversation for 2024. As recipients of the town funding, we're contacted in early September to inform them of the 2024 process. And in September and October, communication was shared with the broader community to raise awareness of the funding request process. A community organization night is being held tonight. And this is why we have all met here tonight. Groups like the ones here tonight will have an opportunity to present a request for funding, answer questions from council, and see other groups present as well. The information from this committee of the whole will inform the 2024 budget. Once the budget is passed in early December, community organizations will be informed of their status of their funding itself. For the 2024 budget, we had asked all community groups to fill in an application for funding to inform council of what amounts they were actually asking for. This was a request from council from last year's 2023 community group funding night. In the application, it has them identify the type of program or service that they will be delivering by their group, what the funds will be utilized for, and the dates of programs or services that will be delivered. In the application, it also identifies the number of persons that will be participating in the program or receiving services. They were then asked to explain why the groups, programs, or services are important and will provide benefit to the community. The final question that was asked on the application form was having them a description of how the groups' programs or services are distinct or unique from any other similar groups or services already provided within the community. Within the application, we asked them to provide their budget for their event, their previous years' financial statements, and any additional information that would be beneficial to their application. So here tonight, we have 10 community groups that are here to present to council. Administration is only asking council to listen to their presentations and ask questions that pertain to their application and their presentation. Administration will bring back these requests into the 2024 budget deliberations later this month. And I'm going to ask legislative services to assist me on getting groups organized so that they can present in the order on the agenda. The first one, I believe, on the agenda is Stars.
Good evening and welcome.
There. Good evening. Very pleased to bring you an annual update again, and thank you very much for your continued support of Stars. So first and foremost, would like to just point out that we, after 37 and a half years, we're going through a bit of a rebrand. So you see just a slightly different logo there as well. You know, we're taking many learnings from the COVID years and also through the wildfires and utilizing all of the brand-new equipment as well as a brand-new fleet that we have and the latest in technology so that we can look at other ways of being able to assist rural communities like the town of Strathmore in providing critical care anywhere, whether it's physically with the helicopter or virtually. Okay. Am I supposed to point this somewhere in particular? Okay, next slide, please. So Stars is fueled by generosity. Now, we previously, you know, we had a 10-year affiliation agreement in place with Alberta Health Services, which expired in 2020. And so we have been year to year since then. We are currently trying to renegotiate another long-term service agreement. So we have been granted an extension for this year while we work through with their senior leadership for a possible 10-year affiliation agreement. In the meantime, last year, we did receive at the end of the year a top-up 250% government funding of our Alberta operational support. So it topped up to $15 million. This does not include our Stars Emergency Link Center, which is our dispatch center, does not include education, and it does not include administration costs. So strictly 50% of operational costs. So that leaves still roughly just under $28 million per year that must be fundraised. Next slide, please. So this is where we're at now when I first brought this to you the last couple of times and where we're at with municipal support across the province of Alberta and into northeastern B.C. So these municipalities, like yourselves, all recognize Stars as an essential service. We have just added five more rural municipalities as well, six more urban municipalities like the town of Strathmore, and we have four pending asks as well. Municipal leaders across the province and into northeastern B.C. are shown in the red boxes there where they are represented on the helicopter and have standing motions of fixed rates within their protective services budgets each year to support Star's services for their residents. The yellow boxes are showing regional partnerships, meaning that the towns and villages that lie within a county's boundaries are now developed regional partnerships. And for Southern Alberta, Wheatland County is our municipal leader in the fact that every municipality, town, and village within the county's boundaries are all supporters. So it's very much a united effort as we all work together to ensure that everyone has access to a robust health and safety network. Next slide, please. So this is information that, as I reported last year, was 10 years in the making. This is utilizing patient postal code, no other patient information other than the postal code where the patient resided at the time they were flown by Stars. Since I reported to you last year for 2023, there has been a total of nine more residents within Wheatland County boundaries that have been flown by Stars. So 115 in total from Strathmore. For this year, only six of those nine residents are Strathmore residents. On the right-hand side, this represents the testament to our partnership. Out of these total 179 residents that lie within Wheatland County that have been flown from five different Stars bases across three provinces, 120 of these residents were flown from Strathmore itself. 59 residents were flown from 29 other municipalities across Western Canada. This is testament to the value of our partnership. Next slide, please. So critical care, you know, physically or virtually, as I said, our Stars Emergency Link Center handles more than 36,000 emergency requests every year, 100 per day. And since Stars has now been named the critical care provider for Alberta, so this also means that our Stars transport physicians are in the Emergency Link Center or accessible 24 hours a day, they will provide medical and procedural guidance on every critical call, regardless of the mode of transport of that patient. They also were now making, being able to save time on both ends. So while we're en route with the patient to a receiving hospital, our transport physicians are also making all the logistical arrangements with the receiving hospitals and the receiving doctors. And we also now are trialing a virtual critical care component, utilizing the secure link on an iPad, being able to talk with the rural physicians at the rural hospitals, and they can physically show our transport physicians, you know, the patient and make the determinations or assist in procedural guidance. So this is another advancement in being able to provide critical care, whether it's physically or virtually. Next slide, please. So of course, we now have finalized, we received the 10th and final H-145 helicopter last October. And so the campaign is now also completed. We were able to incrementally sell off our previous BK-117 fleet, and we have attributed all of those proceeds to the capital campaign. So I'm very pleased to report to you that all 10 helicopters are also paid for. So we can move forward now in this generational investment. As well, last year, we also celebrated over 20 years of having the night vision goggle capability. We were the very first civilian organization in Canada to be able to fly at night. More than 50% of our call volume is at night, so literally tens of thousands of patients over the last 20 years. Lives have been saved because we have this ability. Next slide, please. Of course, it's very important that we continue to have the very highest level of critical care available in our crews. So for expertise above and beyond, there is an air medical transport conference. It's a simulation competition. This is worldwide each year. At this particular simulation competition across the world, teams come from every helicopter EMS program, and they all compete in a very rigorous competition in order to be graded on all of their skills, their triage ability, managing multiple patients, utilizing the very high fidelity simulation mannequins as well. So this, Stars previously, we have participated now for 20 years. And in this 20 years, Stars team of two has placed top three all 20 years in the world. This past year, this was our team from Saskatoon that actually won first place. This also marks the seventh time in those 20 years that Stars has been first place. We are very proud to bring your residents the highest level of critical care available in Alberta. And next slide, please. So in closing, I would like to say thank you very much to town of Strathmore. We thank you for your leadership and dedication and your support. Your previous support was at $10,000 for 2023, and our request is for a slight increase. The majority of the municipalities across the province are starting at a minimum $2 per capita rate. We hope to continue to work with your council as well. So we'd like to ask for a slight increase that was based on a $1 per capita rate and ask for $14,000 for 2024 for your consideration. We are averaging 10 missions per day right now. In the last four months, we have seen about a 35% increase hike in mission volume, largely due to the very unfortunate circumstances related with post-COVID, as well as a lot of rural communities reaching out and their physicians for help with wildfire situations, respiratory distress, those types of things. So in addition to the 10 daily demand, there's been significant other areas where we've been able to assist. Your hospital, for example, is a very busy hospital as well. So we certainly appreciate your consideration. A life is saved every day, but it's partnership that makes it possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Questions or comments from council? Councillor Wiley?
Sure. Mine's more of a comment. I just want to thank you because my five-year-old daughter, Josie, told me the other day, and I quote, "I want to be, when I grew up, I want to be a helicopter pilot doctor." And I didn't, didn't know where she got it from, but it must be you. Thank you.
Well, in our 37 years, we did have one that was a doctor and a helicopter pilot.
Thank you again. Any further comments or questions? I think you know the process. We'll go away and we'll work through all of the groups and they'll be contacted. Thank you again for coming in. We all respect and appreciate what Stars has done in Strathmore for its residents as well as the county and Sissika.
Yes, well, thank you very much. We appreciate your continued partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, worshiping council. I can take it from here. The next group up to present is the Strathmore Municipal Library Board.
Good evening. Rachel, it's good to see you back again.
Hi, how are you?
Sorry. We're just looking for a red light on your microphone. There we go.
Okay, sorry. We'll try over. Mayor, council members, members of the public, thank you for inviting us to present the Strathmore Library Budget for 2024. I would like to introduce ourselves. Rachel Dick Hughes is our Director of Library Services, and myself, Anne Horn, Chair of the Library Board. Next slide, please. This is just a picture of our diverse and dedicated board members and staff provide excellent services to Strathmore. Next slide, please. The library's mission is to provide opportunities for lifelong learning to all community members, and reduction of barriers is an important value for the library. Our 2023 Plan of Service identified four following areas to focus for the next three years. Our key priority for 2024 is to the library to be more welcoming to all, particularly Indigenous peoples and newcomers to the community. Next slide, please. Our Plan of Service. Library Board solicited feedback from community members during November and December of 2022 to share their thoughts, concerns, and goals for the ideal library services through a variety of channels like survey platforms, posters, and social media. After this, we prioritize recommendations based on their level of significance, urgency, and feasibility while taking into account the library's available resources and budget. For the next Plan of Service, we would like to work closely with the town to align our priorities to make Strathmore the best place to work, learn, and grow together. We believe that by being a community hub, we will build a stronger community. Next slide, please. The town's support to eliminate membership fees and fines in 2022 has had a significant impact on the number of library users. It has gone a long way towards making the library a warm and welcoming place for everyone. As inflation continues to take a toll, it is more important than ever to keep library services free of fees. We'd like to just emphasize a few of these activities. We've had over 40,000 visitors, over 1,000 new memberships, and over 6.5,000 total members. And next slide, and Rachel's going to take over here.
So our programs are continuing to grow post-pandemic with early literacy programs finding a pretty significant demand in the community. Between January and August, we've had over 1,600 people attend those. We continue to offer educational children's programs like our Book Buddies reading support program and Flex Friday programs for families. Our visiting library program continues to meet the needs of those who are most at risk of isolation, particularly in the winter months. And our volunteers and clients alike have really appreciated the return of the visiting portion of that program since COVID. During the first eight months of the year, we had over 5,000 people attend library programs. Next slide, please. Provincial grant funding for our Strathmorean area adult inclusive learning, or SAIL program, means that newcomers and other adults facing barriers to learning can be served in their local community with flexible methods of instruction and at a pace that works for them. SAIL supports learners to prepare for further education, to develop job skills, and to improve their literacy and language skills. Next slide, please. In the first eight months of the year, we had 61 volunteers put in over 1,000 hours at the library. This is just a huge value in maximizing what the library can do in the community. And in turn, the library offers community members meaningful opportunities to build community through volunteer work. Next slide, please. One of the essential benefits the library offers is technology, so free computers and Wi-Fi are really critical for keeping people connected to the services they need and to friends and family. We work together with organizations like The Vault to provide opportunities for arts and culture. We build community by offering programs like our Halloween Costume Exchange, which saw 133 participants a few weeks ago. We're supporting reconciliation work. We partnered with Trellis to celebrate Sissika Day in September, and we have a growing collection of Blackfoot resources to support residents as they do their own work towards reconciliation. We collaborate with many community groups to offer programs like Mother Goose in the Park, Alberta Culture Days, Seniors Week. We host information and education sessions put on by AHS to support mental health and wellness. The library is a key point of welcome for newcomers in Strathmore. And in September, we had at least two families show up at the library within their first week of arriving in Canada. They signed up for library memberships, they registered their children in programs, and they even applied to volunteer. One of these women has been serving a really important role as a translator for other new families who don't speak any English at all, and that has just made a world of difference for these newcomers to Strathmore. As a community hub, the library is well-positioned to connect people to what they need, whether inside the library or out in the community. Staff provide referrals to other community organizations to make sure that the community is connected and supported. Finally, the public nature of library space and library programs encourages connections between people from all different walks of life, diminishing isolation and giving people a stronger sense of community. The library is really unique in its role as a free public space. As you know, our staff are at the heart of what we do at the library. On any given day, they can deliver an early literacy program, help someone download and print forms for government assistance, enroll someone in visiting library, welcome a newcomer to Canada and connect them to English language learning classes with SAIL, help someone print a resume and refer them to Prospect for job-seeking support, connect someone with a print disability with service from SILA, help someone book our program room to deliver fitness classes, find books to prepare a child for a hospital visit, and help a child find the book that will get them to love reading. So our staff deserve to be compensated appropriately, and this brings us to our budget challenges for 2024. Next slide, please. Our staff's wages have been below standard for quite some time. Oh, sorry. Okay, we're going to skip to the next slide. Sorry, my mistake. So our staff's wages have been below standard for quite some time, and this situation has been exacerbated by the increased rate of inflation over the last few years. The board is working to implement a pay grid with our next budget and has found that a 7% increase for frontline staff will begin to align them to wages earned in comparable-sized Miragold libraries in 2022. The increase we are requesting would be a start towards matching our reasonable market comparators, and we would hope for a plan for a staged increase with annual increases linked to the cost of living following that. You'll see in your handout historical wage data as well as data from comparable Miragold libraries and from the government of Alberta that provided the basis for our proposed pay grid. This effort represents the bulk of our requested funding increase at just over $40,000. Purchases of new public computers had to be put off last year due to static funding levels, and consequently, it can be frustrating for the public when they're trying to get things done. We carefully consider what technology needs to be replaced, and even so, we do need at least $10,000 to $15,000 to ensure public access to fast and reliable technology. Annual audits will add another significant cost to the library, estimated at approximately $10,000. And I know many of you have heard me say before, but when economic times get tough, we do get busier at the library. So we expect that our demand for our services will continue to grow over the next year. Next slide, please. So overall, we are asking for an investment of $407,000 into library services for 2024. This is not out of line with funding in comparable communities. We've included a graph in your handout showing the 2018 per capita funding levels for libraries serving communities our size. And what we're requesting for 2024 would still be below that average per capita rate based on current population numbers from the government of Alberta. Investments in libraries go a long way. In two, well, just this month, the Canadian Urban Institute found that the return on investment in public libraries is 600%. So every dollar invested in public libraries brings $6 in social and economic benefit to the community. You can see from the number of visitors and program attendees we've had this year that thousands of people in Strathmore rely on the library. With your continued support, we can make progress together on providing family-friendly spaces, developing community, and offering programs and resources to support community wellness, making Strathmore a great place for everyone. Next slide, please.
We just want to thank you for your ongoing support to the library, and if you have any questions now, we'd be glad to pick them.
Any questions or comments from council? Councillor Wiley?
Sure. I saw on the slide that staff have received a 3.5% increase since 2023, but what's the percent increase proposed for next year?
So that, it actually says that between 2020 and 2023, our average frontline staff wage has gone up 3.5% in that time. So the average increase proposed for 2024 would be closer to 7%.
7% from this year to next year?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that was just keeping them, they're not even getting a living wage really right now. They're below the annual, so it's hard, if it's someone that's working full-time, to, you know, support their family, so.
Other questions or comments from council? Rachel, I have one question for you. I believe you have no charge for memberships now?
That's right, yes.
How detrimental would it be to the library if you started to look at having some library membership fees?
I think the challenge with that is it would lock out the people who most need our services. And it's really against the trend of what's happening in the province, especially since COVID, most communities have gone to fee-free libraries. And yeah, they've just found that it disproportionately affects the people who can least afford to be affected. We do definitely think we could do more work to promote donations when you renew your memberships, and we do have people who can afford it, and they donate far more than their membership fee ever cost. But to have that barrier again is really a challenge, particularly for people who don't want to ask for it to be waived. Of course, we would waive it in the past when we had it, but it's a hard thing for people to come and ask for that. So we'd really like to ensure that we don't have to reinstate those fees.
Okay, thank you. And what would be an annual fee from the past, the recent past?
It was $20 for a family and $12 for an individual.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Wiley and then Councillor Peterson?
Thanks. Rachel, did I see correctly, you've had 1,000 new memberships? Is that since the fees was waived or this year?
So this year, we are projected to have 1,000. We're at just over 800 right now, this year, new memberships, yeah.
I mean, in a population this size, that must be quite an incredible increase.
It is, yes. And I think on one of the slides, it showed in 2022, which is the year you funded us to remove fees, we had over 1,200 new members. So it is, it does make a significant difference.
And so anecdotally speaking, you would say a number of those are due to the free membership?
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Peterson?
Thank you, worship. So can you tell us if, so no one coming to Strathmore Library pays fees, whether you're in town or out of town?
Correct.
And so then you make, I'm assuming, application to county residents for funding as well?
Yes. Wheatland County funds us right now. They have a formula- Right now, they have a formula they use based on the number of cardholders who reside in the county, cardholders registered at our library.
Can you give, I didn't read your budget in its fullest, but it must be in there?
Yeah, they give us $15 per cardholder, so they give us about $15,000 a year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Any other comments or questions from council? Counselor Wiley?
Sorry, so that means there's only 100 cardholders in Wheatland?
A thousand.
Or 1,000 card, in all of Wheatland County, there's 1,000, and in Strathmore, then there must be?
5,500 or so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we also do encourage Wheatland residents to register at their local library because those small libraries really struggle for funding, and they are under the same kind of funding terms, although some of them have a lump sum in addition. But if you reside in Carlsland, we really encourage you to get your card at Carlsland, just to keep those smaller hubs open.
Seeing no further, microphones lit up. Thank you again for your presentation, and the town will be in contact with you for sure. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did write down another question, may I?
Sure.
Okay, through the mayor. I saw on the slide 48 SAIL participants, is that different individuals or classes in total offered?
That's the number of individuals who went through a series of classes, so that's the way that the Advanced Education Funding Councilers, is they have to follow through a specific number of courses.
But that's 43 different?
Forty-eight, yeah.
Or 48?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thanks again, ladies. Jonathan?
Thank you, worship. Next on our agenda, we have the Wheatland Society of Arts.
Good evening, Brandy. Welcome back.
Good evening, your worship, councillors, town staff. Thank you for putting on this community organization night and allowing us to be here to present. I'm Brandy, presenting on behalf of Wheatland Society of Arts. Next slide. As I've mentioned so many times to so many people, our goal is to have something to offer for everyone, visual arts, of course. We add, remove, and adapt continually in response to what we perceive as most wanted and needed. Our most recent excitement is the addition of a pottery studio in the building next to the art studio. Both studios are busy pretty much every single day, pretty much always with two to five programs per day. Next slide. This is a very condensed list of programs going on every week. Often multiples of the same types of classes are going on in the same week. You'll notice the little stars beside that list on the left-hand side. Next slide, please. And the stars are because much of our programming is low-cost, made possible solely because of funding from the town and other grants. We used to have a lot of free programming, but we actually had to implement very small charges for a lot of that as well. But we do try to keep it very low-cost so that it's affordable to a lot of demographics. Next slide, please. This is just sharing a few more pictures that make me smile. Next slide, please. Most of the higher-cost classes run at break even or better. The break even calculations, which determine whether the class will be canceled or not, do not include overhead operating costs, but anything over the break evens theoretically goes into the overhead or into subsidizing the low-cost programs, depends how you look at that. Next slide. And the pottery studio is now open, and it's already bursting at the seams. Usually, new programs and things like that take a while to gain traction, but this one just came out of the gate full-tilt, so we got very lucky there. Most of the equipment, tools, preparation of the space, and ongoing maintenance are donated. In fact, even some of the instruction is donated. In some cases, with some instructors, a lot of the instruction is donated. Next slide. And we're growing. The stats we do our best to collect do show that we're growing. All our measurement indicators are up from last year. And as you can see, there are mostly, we advertise by Facebook, MailChimp, our website, and word-of-mouth. We do have fantastic brochures as well, but the biggest reach is probably those three avenues. Next slide, please. Not that you want to read all this tiny information or can read all this tiny information, it's just a glimpse to show that we carefully track our programs as another measure of progress and to help make informed decisions on programming, what we modify, what we cancel, what we do more of. Next slide. We diligently track income and expenses by month as another measure tool, as well as a reporting tool for presentations such as this and reporting on how we've used funding more specifically. Next slide, please. But those profit-loss statements are used to help us watch for trends and create budget projections. But the takeaway here really from this slide is that funding and grants are a huge part of what actually makes what we do possible. Without it, there's a very good chance we wouldn't be here. Next slide, please. So though we owe our operational success to our volunteers and our supporters, we owe our continued ability to even operate to the funding that we receive. We put those dollars to work in this community. We're beyond grateful for the support and funding we have received from the town of Strathmore, and it is with utmost respect that we humbly ask for continued funding. Our sincere thanks for the opportunity to present our request tonight. Last slide, and I'd be glad to answer some questions.
Thank you very much, Brandy. Counselor Wiley, would we be able to go back to the slide where it showed increases in memberships and participation? Brandy, I didn't have a time to do math on that, but in some of those cases, you're looking at 25, 50% increases or more, it looked like. So that's just through, is there, are you guys communicating more? Like, is MailChimp a new thing you're using, or what do you attribute that massive growth to?
It's hard to say. I honestly think that what we've been doing all along is finally gaining more traction. And then with that comes predominantly people talking to people, because on our membership forms, there's a little line that says, "How did you hear about us?", of course. And more and more often, like, I bet 50% of the time now, it's heard it from a friend or a friend brought me along, or, so.
Yeah, because your memberships are over 100% increases.
Yeah, that's pretty exciting for us, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Wiley. Any other questions or comments for Brandy and the Society of Arts? Seeing none, thanks again for coming and putting on your presentation, and we'll be making our decision in the very near future.
Thank you again for the opportunity, and thank you to the slide flipper over there.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Thank you, worship. Next on the agenda, we have Growing Family Society.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honourable councillors, fellow townspeople. So, yeah, no technology for us. And wow, what, like, just what a valuable night in our town hall. Like, truly, all the organizations presenting tonight really are the heartbeat of our town. So I'm here to present for Five for Life Early Childhood and Bridging the Gap, or known as BTG. It takes time to build strong programs. Five for Life is at 10 years, and Bridging the Gap is 13 years. These programs are safety nets for our young families and seniors. The value and the lasting impact they have on our community is unmeasurable. They are both a product of multiple partnerships and collaboration over the years. Some of the key partnerships have been with the library, the food bank, Healthy Families, Trellis, both of the FCSSs, churches, and Alberta Health's Mental Health, Addictions, and Nutrition Departments. Both programs are heavily supported by volunteers. Tapping into the resource of volunteers is a true gold mine for the town. It's the relationship built on trust and experience that is our success. We have very skilled volunteers that bring a wealth of knowledge and expertise to our programs. They volunteer because they know there is a need in our community for these programs, and their time is valued. There's a great personal satisfaction gained when you are needed, and there's purpose for your volunteered time. Each of these programs also has their own resource handbook specifically designed for the participants. The seniors handbook has larger print, space to write notes, and easy-to-turn pages. The Five for Life handbook is similar or is smaller, so it easily slips into a diaper bag. And yes, we do still print it because we have caregivers who may end up in a place without Wi-Fi or service. The Five for Life program was created out of the province's call to determine if children were ready to enter kindergarten based on five pillars of development: physical health, emotional maturity, social competence, language and thinking skills, and communication skills and general knowledge. In 2016 and 2018, extensive data was collected, and it was determined 1 in 5 children in Strathmore and Wheatland County experienced difficulty in at least one of these areas. So a coalition was formed. The funding we are requesting will help support the hiring of summer staff and the running of our programs. Winter programs include Motoring Munchkins, which is held at the Strathmore Motor Products Sports Center once a month, and a gymnastics program at the Strathmore Gymnastics Center. New this year is an art program, which will be partnered with the Wheatland Arts Society. Our summer programming includes Mother Goose in the Park, attending the Strathmore Farmer's Market, and participating in Mental Health Week. Five for Life's focus is on the first five years, educating caregivers for prevention and also to enable early intervention. We help connect families to services that can help them. We want kids to thrive by five. In 2022, we had 700 participants, divided by our ask of $10,000, works out to the town investing $14 per participant, a solid investment into the future generation of our town. Bridging the Gap's key benefits for our seniors is the opportunity to meet people, socialize, connect new residents into our community, learning new things and skills, as well as rewarding volunteer opportunities. We provide a flexible environment so all seniors, even the ones that are over 80, can volunteer. The sense of purpose, the physical movement, and the socialization all contribute to enhancing their quality of life. Bridging the Gap has many success stories, but none bigger than our Community Lunch Program. Our first few years, we had three to four participants. Now, we have on average 45 to 50 every week, the average age being 75 to 80. Lord of All Lutheran Church donates the space. Volunteers do the menu planning in which no meal has been duplicated. They purchase the groceries, they seek out deals. There is a core group of six volunteers who arrive by 9:30 to prepare a hot meal and a dessert, so much better than cereal and toast, which is a common menu item for seniors who live alone. These are skilled volunteers. Not many people can prepare meals for 50 people. There is a presentation on a topic that the group has requested, there's connection time, and finally, the meal is enjoyed together. Another big buzz is about Nancy's newsletter. Nancy is our BTG coordinator, and she sends out a weekly email to 300 seniors. They love it. It's read, it's shared, and it is talked about. Nancy's newsletter had to be added to our evaluation, as that was how people were finding out about events in our town. Other highlights for Bridging the Gap include being an active partner for Seniors Week, our year-end barbecue, which was attended by 80 seniors, the Bridging the Gap website has a calendar of events, which is kept up to date by a volunteer, our seniors matinee at the Joyland Theater, the next one's scheduled in December, and ATB has graciously offered to sponsor it. Nancy is also a member of our Elder Abuse Committee, and Bridging the Gap also hosts one-time events such as Ice Cream Social, Fall Prevention, or Downsizing and Decluttering. For our proposal, we are seeking support for these programs and the coordinator position. Seniors have a relationship with Nancy, and they trust her with their story. She connects seniors to the services in our town. She is the drive that keeps these programs running. She looks after details that are crucial to a program's success, like advertising, booking venues, booking speakers. She has the knowledge to know who can help with individual needs. Without her, I know these details would burn out volunteers. She is crucial to the success of BTG's programs. In 2022, we tracked a total of 403 volunteer hours, and we had 753 participants, which is low due to COVID being the start of 2022. So divided by our ask of $18,100, works out to the town investing $24 into every senior, a solid investment into the generation that helped to build our town. Last year, we were not here, as we had a memorandum agreement for three-year block funding, and that comes to an end this December. I would like to encourage you to consider this type of funding model for organizations, as it has many benefits to both sides. It allowed us more freedom for long-term planning and helped exponentially with staff retention. Precious time can be spent on clients and programs rather than time-consuming applications. These packages in front of you tonight were not just whipped up in an afternoon. Of course, there is always yearly reporting and due diligence in place with options to change funding if situations change. Five for Life and Bridging the Gap support both ends of our community's population. I thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this process. I am sure you are aware of the importance of your role to help keep the heartbeat of our town vibrant.
Thank you for your presentation. Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will be in touch, or you'll obviously be hearing about things. Jonathan?
Thank you, worship. Next on our agenda, we have Strathmore Musical Arts Society.
Good evening.
Good evening, sorry. Oh, thank you. I am short.
And just for the audience, if you feel that you don't want to necessarily stay for all of the presentations, don't worry, you won't offend anyone if you quietly, don't storm out, but maybe quietly leave.
Well, thank you to Mayor Pat Fuel and the council members, as well as the fellow community organizations. I think it takes us all, it takes the community, you know, to build a strong town. And we thank you for this time to put forward our application for grant. The Strathmore Music Arts Society originated in 1996 with seed money from the town of Strathmore. That means that we've been 27 years. That means that we've been 27 years in the community. Our motto is, "A life without music would be incomplete." And our mission statement is to provide top-quality entertainment in a dinner theater atmosphere, which is what we do. We still would like an arts center that has awesome acoustics. We support live music, and we bring in the best musicians within our budget. We support upcoming young musicians by giving them a larger audience and connecting them with seasoned musicians. And we've done that a lot, and we've seen them go up the ladder as far as with their musical abilities. We support our community through a 50/50 program that we donate to other nonprofit organizations. And I should mention that we are totally nonprofit, and that we are totally run by volunteers. And we buy our own tickets to the events, just so you know. We support other nonprofit organizations by including them in our shows, like the arts and the theater players. We've had them involved in our different programs. We put on about four to five shows a year, and we've arranged to have musicians put on a program in schools and encourage the love of music and culture. We had the Strathmore High School students put on a flash mob at our last show, and they put on Grease, and it was totally, totally accepted. People had a lot of fun with it. And then we supported their school music program financially through our 50/50 program. We encourage socialization by bringing folks together in an atmosphere of fun laughter and the enjoyment of great talent. We encourage music in the classroom for health, happiness, and success. It's been proven that it's essential to health and wellness. So, how can the town of Strathmore support music and culture? Through financial support, and we appreciate the support that we've had this past year, attending the different shows and other functions organized in support of music, and helping the community hear about upcoming events by including information in the utilities bill online and in the mailed bills. We have, is it 15,000 population now? And, you know, we're trying to figure out, how do we reach a broader audience? COVID put us kind of in a negative situation, and we were slowly gaining back our audience. And we look forward to more people coming to our events, because they are fun, and they are good for socialization. It takes stress down a notch. So we want to thank you for your time. We look forward to working with the town of Strathmore to encourage the love of music and culture here in Strathmore and Wheatland County. It's really essential to our health of our town. And I thank you for that.
Thank you, Linda and Tammy. It's great seeing you again. Are there questions or comments from council? Councilor Mitzner?
I'd just like to thank you. Your events are well-attended, well-shared. The meals are amazing, and thank you for supporting the up-and-coming artists. You did have my daughter at the last one, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Mitzner. Thank you again. Jonathan?
Thank you, worship. Next on the agenda, we have True North, formerly Wheatland Crisis Society.
Thanks, everyone. I always feel slightly bad about getting up to speak in the midst of all this celebratory information about the uplifting of community, because my story is not quite as rosy. For those of you who are not familiar, I represent True North Society, formerly known as the Wheatland Crisis Society. And in 2023, we are recognizing 30 years of serving adults and children impacted by domestic violence. And I say "recognize" because it's not a cause for celebration. But unfortunately, the data continues to indicate that we're a much-needed service. Alberta currently stands as the province and the country with the third-highest rate of domestic violence. And we have seen year-over-year increase in demand for our services. Next slide, please. As an organization, we work comprehensively. We are working in a very challenging time, when a lot of contextual factors are contributing to the escalating rates of family violence that we see. Certainly, many of you will know that we operate a place-based emergency shelter, pardon me, that offers space, safe shelter, and 24/7 wraparound supports for up to 25 people at a time. Our ideal, of course, is that people are with us for a short period of time. Since January of this year, more 532 people have called our shelter home for periods of time. And of that number, 67% of those were children under the age of 12. So we know that, you know, domestic violence has a ripple effect. It's not a situational thing. It ripples through families, and it's intergenerational. So that opportunity for safe exit is the first part of a continuum of care. Having someplace to exit to helps you make that next step. But it's not the end of the path by any means. Just as a way of illustrating this, with the weather shifting so rapidly this week, last night I took two calls that were striking to me. One from a woman who had been transient since May, living in her car in Wheatland County area with her children. And the other from a family who was trapped in a camper site with a camper with no heating and looking desperately for an exit. So this is very real, and it's happening around us. Often, it's, you know, sort of talked about as the hidden epidemic. We also do community outreach, so we're not just working out of our place-based facility. And you don't need to be at a stage where you're exiting in crisis before we can support you. We can do early intervention, we can work with prevention, we can reach out to people who aren't ready to make that step and are looking for that support where they are at. So we're doing that, providing counseling support, crisis intervention, trauma care, referrals to resources, everything to help people get wrapped around with support. We're also engaged in a lot of public education, going out, educating other community organizations, helping to work with community members, conveying information to help people understand what to do, where to turn, where to go, who to ask, who to tell, working on that level. And then, of course, obviously, one of our sort of key places that we'd love to see an expanded scope of work is around prevention. Ultimately, we don't want to be in business 30 years from now. I don't want to be coming back celebrating True North's 60th anniversary. But, you know, as things stand, prevention is a key part of that work. And so that's getting to those root causes. And that's where I can take you to some cheerier paths here, because we do believe that we are on a path strategically to solution, solutions. We know that right now, what we're seeing is quite concerning in terms of the housing crisis in our country. And every municipality, every town, every provincial government, and our federal government have a role to play in those solutions. Because one of the most concerning things we're seeing right now is that our length of stay has more than doubled. The average length of stay, which is supposed to be 21 days, is sitting now at 57 days. And that's because we don't have anywhere to exit people to. Affordable housing is almost non-existent. The rental market is extremely tight, with exceptionally low vacancy rates and a lack of stock, to be fair. And it's not reasonable to ask that people make a difficult, difficult choice to have to leave their community, perhaps where they've been for generations, because they've been impacted by domestic violence. Having to tell people that the only option they're going to have is to apply for Calgary housing and wait it out isn't fair or reasonable. And I also think it's a detriment to this community. We don't want to lose people who can be contributing members and have a lot to offer because they've hit some crisis in their life. Terribly, you know, difficult conversations to be having. But I'm super excited to say that we were able to purchase a parcel of land for development in 2022. And we are only a week away from 100% completion of our preconstruction documents. We have a development permit into the town. And we are looking forward to introducing, next slide, please, coming soon, I hope, what we're calling Journey House 2024. We are looking to create 36 units of second-stage shelter. That's basically a longer-term option for people who need an extended period of intensive support before they're ready to transition into community housing, combined with some supportive affordable housing units as well. Within the design of the building, we've also built in a community resource hub that would become a longstanding resource to the full community, regardless of whether they're directly impacted by domestic violence or not. We're looking to have an onsite early childhood development center, daycare center. And we're also building in commercial space that will create opportunities for social enterprise and amenities. And that's super important, because what it means is that this project will be operationally self-sustaining through the revenues generated from those commercial spaces within the building. Perhaps of less importance, but I think important, too, for all of us who are concerned about climate crisis, is that our design exceeds energy efficiency standards and is in line with CMHC's national expectations of all new builds. We're also very much aligned, I think, with the strategic priorities that have been defined by the federal government, the provincial government, and municipalities across the country. And so that's my ask, really. We're not asking for cash. We're asking for some concessions. Across the country, we're asking nonprofits to step up and shoulder the burden of contributing to the development of affordable housing, which we're more than happy to do. And in most cases, we fundraise and create the source of revenue to purchase that land ourselves. We're not receiving that from any level of government. Where a lot of us get crippled is, as many of you know who have had probably contact with developers over the years, is those predevelopment and preconstruction costs are a lot. We're already a million dollars in, in terms of our costs to get to 100% completion of our preconstruction phase. And that's without proceeding to construction. When we realize this, this will represent a $23 million capital investment in community in the town of Strathmore. And we're willing to do that. We're willing to fundraise those dollars. Our ask, if you would give me the next slide, please, is for consideration, in alignment with what other municipalities have considered for nonprofit developers. I have, for those interested in some additional reading, a written summary of municipalities across the country who have adopted policy and regulations that waive some of those fees to allow for incentives to the creation of affordable housing. So nearby neighbor, City of Erdry, this year, passed policy PDEV 15C that exempts development and building permit fees for affordable housing projects. Grand Prairie, similarly, much earlier in the game, in March of 2005, adopted a similar policy. And so our ask to the town is to partner with us on this. If you would give me the next slide, please. Right now, we know that our sort of favorable standing with the applications we're making to CMHC and to the province for the capital dollars to make this a reality will be much, much, much more favorable if there's municipal skin in the game, if the municipality has stepped up to support this project in a meaningful way. And what we're looking for is consideration to waive some of those costs, the development permit fees, the building permit fees, and some of the site levies. Our full ask to the town we've put in is significant. We recognize that that may not be fully achievable, but we would love your consideration if there are component parts of that that could be granted to this project. So I thank you, and I don't want to bring the group down. Great work, everyone who's doing such wonderful stuff to uplift people, and I hope that you'll consider our project. Thank you. Questions, please?
Thank you very much for your presentation.
I'll give you a visual here for those who are visual in nature.
Very nice.
Could you tell, just for our public, and perhaps if there are people sitting in this room that don't know where the site is located? Are you allowed to do that?
Yes, I can. It's close to where our shelter is located on Strathcona Way, so it's in proximity to that, yes. And it's a vacant parcel right now, bounded by Brent Boulevard, yes. And the development we're currently proposing is only taking up half the site, so there's opportunity for future development, whether that's in partnership with private developers, whether it's commercial, whether it's other amenities.
Thank you, Councilor Peterson. Councilor Mitzner?
So you're located directly east of Sagewood, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and what's your estimated completion date?
We're looking to break ground in 2024, optimistically, spring of 2024. And based upon, I mean, some of its contingent, obviously, on supply chain and all of that stuff, we're looking at about an 18-month project completion.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor Peterson.
I just, could I ask your name?
Linda McLean.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Councilor Wiley?
I think you were uplifting, because you were providing hope. Thank you.
Ah, thank you. Usually people say, "Would you please stop and leave?"
Thank you, Councilor Wiley, for that. That makes absolute sense. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And we wish you all the best.
I will leave these with yourself, Jonathan. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Thank you, worship. Next on our agenda, we have the Strathmore District Agricultural Society discussing the Celebration of Lights.
Good evening, Ryan.
Good evening, mayor, council, and other community groups. Oh, thank you. My name is Ryan Schmidt. I'm the general manager of the Strathmore District Agricultural Society, and with me is Joanne Salgensen.
Good evening, Joanne.
She is the chair of the Celebration Lights Committee and former Volunteer of the Year for Strathmore, I believe, two years ago. It's humbling to be here with so many groups and hearing about all the things that are going on. It makes you realize and remember just the small spoke in the wheel of so many things that are going on in Strathmore. So I want to thank all the other nonprofits and community groups here tonight for everything they're doing and the extremely important things that they're doing. Recently, somebody asked me, "What really is the Strathmore in District Agricultural Society all about?" And I thought about that, and, you know, I thought to myself, "Well, are we about rodeo? Yes, we are. Are we about the Celebration of Lights? Yes, we are. Do we do that Halloween Fright Night thing? Yes, we do. The Father's Day event? Yes, we're about those things. So we're about events. Are we about providing facilities? Yes, we do. We provide rental facilities for other nonprofit groups and community members to help hold special celebrations like weddings. Are we about baseball? Yes. Are we about camping? Yes, we're about that, too. We've got a significant campground." But I tried to put it all together in my mind and say to myself, "You know, what does all this mean?" And I decided we're about knitting. So what I mean by that is we're about knitting the social fabric of the community and helping to do that. You know, and it's been about five years now I've been in this job, and I've realized it really is true. I've heard many organizations speak about a challenge, finding volunteers and gathering people to help with their events. And I'm relieved and happy to say that's not a struggle we have at the Strathmore District Agricultural Society. We seem to draw a number of people, a broad, diverse number of people, to help out. And I think it's because if you have events that exude joy, it tends to draw people together, all kinds of different people. You know, and I really do think that joy-filled events help break down barriers between people. You know, we see the young and the old come out and volunteer at our events and attend our events. We see people who are literally brand-new to our community, to those who have been here for, you know, 80 years and tell us exactly how everything should be done. And they all come together. And I find that in the breaking down of the barriers at these type of events, it can bring a type of healing. It breaks down prejudice. It draws together people who just wouldn't otherwise spend the time together, and the joy of the event kind of overcomes it. Our volunteers include from the Hutterite communities that come to town and help out with these things, Aboriginal community members from Sikseka who attend and volunteer. We have new Canadians that come out, all of us. We gather together. And so really, that's the answer I would give at the end. We're an agricultural society, yes, but we're about knitting together the social fabric of the community. So with that long introduction, we're here to talk about the Celebration of Lights. It has this huge social impact. It's about bringing joy to families and people throughout the region, giving them something to smile about. And I talked about this knitting together of groups. For example, last year, four different groups that came out and helped with setting up, with the Wheatland Kings, the U16 Ringette Team, a huge group from Crowther Memorial General High, Junior High School, and the Happy Gang Seniors Group. All these different people are coming together to make- All these different people are coming together to make this happen because it's something about the joy of it. And Joanne's going to talk more about that very shortly. There's also an economic impact to the things we do. I mean, Strathmore Stampede's an obvious one. We have almost 45,000 people come through the gates that weekend now each year. And it's approximately a $5 million economic impact to the region. And the celebration of lights is no slouch, actually. 13,000 people came through the gates last year for the celebration of lights. We have somebody standing at the gate with the clicker every time somebody comes through. An opening night itself, I think we were close to 4,000 people. We actually couldn't keep up with the clicking last year. So it's definitely something that's drawing people, and we know anecdotally they're coming from Calgary, they're coming from other cities, other provinces, and even countries. So we know it's having an economic impact, too. So the town of Strathmore is a huge investor and supporter of the celebration of lights. If you have seen our budget that's in your package, you know that our budget is approximately $30,000 to put on the celebration of lights. And the town of Strathmore has faithfully given $10,000 of that each and every year. So what are you getting with your investment? I think it's important to highlight it. So it runs for six weeks from November 25th to January 7th, so that we include Ukrainian Christmas. And it's open every single day from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Regularly, we provide hot chocolate, cookies, and fire pits, which the town also loans us, thank you, to warm everybody up. And Santa's Cottage is open every night with brilliant displays for people to come and see. And we have Santa come Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, and also sleigh rides on every Saturday. Over the 16 years the Celebration Lights has run, we've built now 89 separate panels. Those are just the ones that go up on all the fences. There's also all the other displays around. And the funding helps to contribute new panels each year. So this year, our team of volunteers built a new naughty and nice motion panel, a cozy fireplace panel, four new nutcracker panels, a campfire panel, and we have a new Grinch panel. So opening night is the biggest night, of course. We have after the Strathmore Christmas parade, we have our countdown to turning on the lights. We've got the hot chocolate there, smores, fireworks display. Santa's Cottage opens with Santa's attending horse-drawn wagon rides, mascots, and if they can afford some spare time, a visit, too, from the fire department. In addition, the Celebration Lights puts on the Kids' New Year's Eve Party. So this, as far as I know, is the only kids' New Year's Eve party in Strathmore. And it's a huge dance party with free pizza and drinks, entertainment, face painting, balloon twisting, more wagon rides, and of course, some New Year's Eve fireworks, just for the kids. We put them on at 8 o'clock so that the kids can all see them, not late at night, and then parents can put them to bed. So the event is 100% volunteer-run. It's free of charge for anybody who wants to come. And we run on a break-even nonprofit approach. We keep a separate bank account for the Celebration of Lights from all other Ag Society funds, and it's funded entirely by donations and sponsorship. So, you know, our revenues are basically this. The town of Strathmore provides that huge funding of 10,000 to it. We get approximately 15,000 from other sponsorships from the local community. And every year, just from people coming and chipping in $5 or $2 here and there, it adds up to another $5,000, and that's how we put it on every year. And on the volunteer front, there are 1,100 volunteer hours that go into putting it on every year. So this is led by Joanne and her team, but there's a group of, a ton of other volunteers that come out throughout the six weeks of it. And I'm going to pass it now to Joanne to speak a little more of her experience of leading the Celebration Lights.
Thank you. Okay. The only way I can describe to you what it is is the warm and fuzzy feeling. I guess being a volunteer, I've been doing this for many years now. You get to visit with people and talk to them and hear their stories, and it's amazing that you don't see when you just walk around and look. Like, we've had them from Europe and, you know, they talk about what their place is like. And everybody is amazed that a town the size of Strathmore has a display like this. Like, they're all just, wow, you know? And they're amazed that it's all volunteer-run, because that's what it is. We have a fantastic group of volunteers. So the impact on people, it's amazing. If you want to come and volunteer and see, we'd more than welcome you to, you know, but example, the outdoor arena just down the street, some boys came up one night crawling. They had their skates on. They came in, they said, can we please have some hot chocolate and just warm up? And so I said, as long as you stay on your knees. So they crawled across to the hot chocolate room. And, I mean, they were so happy and grateful. They just, you know, happy to come in. Years ago, Dennis wasn't there, so the, we have the handicap, not handicap, the seniors buses can come in early and drive through the park. And he didn't make it there on time, so I had to hop on the bus with him. I was amazed. They were oohing and aahing and just, oh, this is so fantastic. And I just looked at him and thought, does this really mean that much to you? Like, it was the warm, fuzzy feeling I'm talking about, to see the seniors that happy. The Ringette Team came in to volunteer last year, and the girls are all like this, you know? And we said, okay, take your trees, decorate them wherever you want. And they go, however we want? I said, yep, just, those girls within 20 minutes were laughing and giggling. And at the end of the night, they said, thank you. Can we do this again next year? You know, it bonded that group, too. I personally have given up Christmas Eve or Christmas Day. And a lot of families make that part of their Christmas to come in there, but there's also a lot of people that have nothing else to do. And we are open Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. And they just come in and some of them spend a couple hours there, just looking around and having hot chocolate. So it's important. It's got a good impact on the community. And for six weeks, I think it helps the town, not to mention tourism, the people coming in. There's a lot of people that say they came just to see our lights. So it is an important thing, I think, and I hope you continue to support it so we can keep doing it. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you both for your presentation. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Jonathan?
Thank you, worship. Next on our agenda, we have the Kakatosa Young Men Foundation. It'll be on Zoom.
Okay, thank you.
Hello?
Good evening, Melody.
Hi, good evening. It's a real honor to be here tonight, and I thank you all for having us included. So I just wanted to thank Mayor Pat Fuel and Town Council for this past year's Lead by Example 2023, and also the Town Office and Sichica Nation in coming together and building upon relationships and reconciliation and making a change in our communities in a positive light. And so with that, because this past year was such a positive gathering of all First Nations across Canada and the United States, I just have to share with you a bit of feedback from all summer, we've, all the places that we've traveled, our daughter is the Miss Lead by Example 2023, 2024 princess. And she's representing the town of Strathmore and Sichica and the reconciliation work that everyone is doing together. And there has been such an enormous positive feedback from every place that we've been to and all the community of every place we've been to in Strathmore, the businesses. And from an economic standpoint, it has been great in bringing this to the town of Strathmore. And so it was a huge success. And by listening to the people, our family are very honored to move forward and to commence with the Lead by Example Powwow 2024. And our boys' memorials are now completed. We've completed the fourth year. And now we can lead into huger events and huger things, such as the Indian Relay and possibly a carnival and an outdoor event, and moving the date from March to June 7th, 8th, and 9th. And we've been in works with the town, with the Ag Society, on booking those dates for the rodeo grounds so we can move to a larger venue. Because there was over 3,000 people that attended this past event. And now we didn't want to run into any issues of building capacity. And this way, people could be charged a fee at the gates to help cover for costs of the things that we need to commence with the event. And also, we'll be working with schools, which we propose to do is to work with schools to have them bust in on the Friday, where they'll be having dance performances, cultural activities, and learning about First Nations. And that would be taking place during that afternoon. And then the Powwow would commence Friday, 7:00 p.m., and then Saturday, 1:00 and 7:00, grand entries. Well, that would be an all-day event. And Sunday also. So it'll be a three-day this time because of the success that we've had and so many people wanting to attend. And we've had so many people come from all over, from British Columbia, all over the United States, Toronto, Ontario, Northern Alberta, Saskatchewan. And so in working with the events, we've also brought our communities together, such as the Sichica Security, Sichica Ambulance. And so many people have come together in volunteering. And we really think the town of Strathmore in working with our family to move forward with this in creating the Kakadusi Christian Young Man Foundation so that it alleviates all the pressures from the town. And it go, we can work with this upon this foundation to continue the Lead by Example Powwow in bringing our communities together in a positive light. And it also touches upon the areas where the town will be building upon reconciliation efforts in, such as the Truth and Reconciliation Calls to Action. Many areas such as Calls to Action 43 and 44, 57, 64, -1, and 66. It's building upon education and would benefit further understanding to the town upon First Nations to learn about each other's cultures and bringing others together. And it was really beautiful having First Nations vendors, the towns vendors, the food vendors, craft vendors, all come together, and it was such a beautiful event. So we're looking at the dollar amounts from last year was about 160,000 from the budget that we submitted from last year. And we're looking at working with sponsors, applying for grants. And we still do need the town's support because we've worked with such amazing people, such as Scott. He did the website and the designing. And your town has such beautiful people. They, 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 they went above and beyond our expectations. But the event came together very beautifully. So we, we still ask that we're not left to do this on our own, that we could still work together and bring our communities together. And I didn't put a dollar amount to this. I just left it up to the town. I know Sichica put in 30,000, Sichica Health put in 10,000, Blackfoot Confederacy put in about, I believe, 5,000. And other organizations of Sichica had put in some dollar amounts. But I believe strongly with the work that we're doing and the things that the town and Sichica are doing together, that this will really build upon a positive impact for our communities so that we can all move together, you know, forward in a good way, in a positive light, and continue that. And continue to build upon relations for our future generations. And that's it. And if you have any questions?
Thank you, Melody. It's great seeing you again. Are there any questions or comments from council tonight? Counselor Peterson?
Okay, thank you, Melody. The money that you mentioned that was coming in from your other sponsors, was that from last year? Or is that projected for 2024?
Those ones are from last year, just to give you an example.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. I also want to thank you for all the work that you've put in, that you and your family have put in, work of the heart, but also work of the hands, too.
Thank you.
Kedemetson?
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Thank you again, Melody. We look forward to seeing how the next one will be because we think partnering with the Ag Society and using their grounds is is a way to really step it up and become something bigger, better, and more inclusive and more important to the town and the area. So we wish you all the best, and council and administration will be going through all of these proposals. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jonathan?
Thank you, worship. The next organization we have here is the Strathmore Overnight Shelter Society. That's the last organization tonight.
Thank you, Jonathan. Good evening, Pastor Karp. Nice seeing you again.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, community members. So, yeah, we're representing the Strathmore Overnight Shelter. There's been some amazing presentations here, actually, tonight. And we work, they work back and forth with the shelter to help us tremendously, and we really, really appreciate their support. The shelter opened in September 11th, 2018. And since that time, we've averaged about 6,700 volunteer hours a year. We've seen 4,670 client nights per year. We average about 25 people housed per year. Many have found employment, some have found sobriety, some have gone on into successful rehab programs and furthering education. As the same is with True North, I wish that there wasn't a need, but the need has really, really increased. So due to the homelessness, the shelter is now quite often operating at full capacity, which is 20 beds. Sometimes we have more than that coming in to eat because we feed some of those who are between food bank days, like hampers. And with the rising cost of rent and utilities, they can't afford to eat, so they come in to have a meal. Sadly, in the past year, we've also had an increase of seniors. They can no longer sustain their housing with the rising cost of living. On our Saturday mornings, the church gives out bread to more than 100 people just between 10 and 12 o'clock on Saturday mornings. So today, the shelter operates on a 250,000 grant that we got for a period of four years from the Rural Development Network Grant. And the shelter, you know, we accepted approximately $65,000 in monetary donations, received approximately $300,000 in in-kind donations over those past years. We've achieved 75,000 in subsidiary grants. That's RDN, Second Harvest, FCSS has helped us out. The town of Strathmore has helped us out. And we have some really amazing sustainable partnerships with the following. Some of the examples, we work back and forth with Sichica a lot, work with the shelter in Sichica, as well as other needs there. The town of Strathmore, of course, Strathmore Chamber of Commerce, Wheatland County Food Bank, FCSS, both Wheatland and Strathmore FCSS, Strathmore and Area Ministerial Association, Prospect Employment Services, Wheatland Housing, the RCMP, Primary Care Network, the library, and many more businesses and individuals that contribute and support to the shelter. In March of 2024, our government funding runs out. And to date, there has been no opportunities to reapply. One of our greatest concerns right now is on our night shift, I only have, on an average, one person. And it is a real safety concern for me that we do not have two people on there. And it, uh, it is a real safety concern for me that we do not have two people on there, uh, that's sometimes manning up to twenty people throughout the night. And so just to secure a second night position for nine hours, um, a night would require funding of forty-five hundred dollars a month. That's paying minimum wage. At some point, it would be a blessing, uh, to be able to open the shelter during the day, at least for the months of, of, uh, November through, through to April. But that would require employment for another eleven hours for two people a day. The town has, um, been a huge support to us when they open their doors to the warming stations during the winter. That really helps tremendously. FCSS has also helped with transportation, and my volunteers and myself have also, um, you know, put in extra hours so that we can accommodate the outside hours of that. And so, uh, I wish I could say that there is a point where we no longer need the shelter, and that would be the goal. But right now, it's become a huge need in Strathmore and surrounding areas. So we respectfully ask that you would consider helping us out again in two thousand and twenty-four with whatever the budget allows. And, uh, we are super thankful for your current support. It means a tremendous lot for all of us. Most of us at the shelter are volunteers. Uh, I am the Executive Director of the shelter, um, but I am a volunteer as well. That's my position there. So we thank you. This is our treasurer, John Deck, as well, who can answer any financial questions that you may have. So thank you again for your support and your time.
Thank you very much. Um, you know, I just want to share my appreciation. You, as a pastor in your church, you shared your building for this initiative, and you, you took this on as a challenge, and you, you've gone way above and beyond what a typical minister would do. You really have shared what you have and, and have allowed safe, caring environment for the, this vulnerable population. So I, I really appreciate everything you've done. You've really stepped up above and beyond.
Thank you.
Counselor Peterson?
Thank you, worship. I, I just, I think it's a testament to what you do, and I look and see how tired both of you are. And, uh, and I, uh, it, it, uh, leaves a lump in my throat when I see this number of nearly seven thousand volunteer hours per year. That's extraordinary. Hundred and thirty-some hours per week, uh, of volunteering, fifty-two weeks a year. I, I can't believe that you have managed to move that many people, uh, to come and share this mission, and, uh, it's extraordinary.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? Seeing none, thank you again for your presentation and all that you do, and it's very nice meeting you, sir. Jonathan?
Thank you, worship. That's, uh, that's, those are all of our community groups for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the, they're still, yeah. Uh, thank you all for your presentations and coming forward, and thank you all for what you're doing in our community and the various groups and organizations that, that are, that you represent. We definitely appreciate all the efforts for our residents. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to adjourn the, um, the meeting for the various groups that have come before us, and I'm adjourning the meeting at eight twenty-two.